Okay, today is September the 18th at 6 o'clock and we're here for the City of Cape Canaveral Planning and Zoning Board meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Brianna, can you call roll, please?
Okay, we have Board Member Denny.
Here.
Board Member Gentlcor. Board Member Miller.
Here.
And Vice Chair Price.
Here.
Chairperson Russell.
Yeah, he's absent today.
And Board Members Stroud.
Here.
We have a quorum at four of seven members with one vacancy.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name's John Price. Lamar Russell, the chairman, is out tonight, so I'll be filling in for him. First thing I'd like to mention is that if there's anybody that would like to speak tonight, we encourage that. There's a little form for you to fill out, just giving your name, your address, that kind of thing, and a little bit about what you want to talk about. If it's concerning any of the agenda items tonight, we'll call you to speak when we're talking about that agenda item, okay? Let's continue on, no old business, how about new business? Approval of the minutes of the meeting for June 26, 2024. Has everybody had a chance to look over the minutes? Any corrections or changes as they're written? And we're looking for a motion for approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes.
Steve Stroud.
Denny will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Alrighty, that was easy. So let's move on to the second agenda item, which is consideration of recommendation of approval for Cape View Coastal Parcel Number 243723 CG 11-1. Primary plat to city council and site plan to the city manager's designation. Kyle, do you want to take the lead on that?
Sure. First, I just want to introduce you guys. I know you've all spoken. Brianna Soot is our new Community and Economic Development Director. This is her first planning and zoning board meeting, and as I think you're all aware, this is my last planning and zoning board meeting, so.
Wasn't aware until just a little while ago.
Yeah. Renee could not be here tonight, she's not feeling well, so she'll be back next time. So, yeah, we can get started. Brianna, can you go to, the next slide is just the agenda. Alright. So, good evening, board members. Tonight's agenda, we're looking at the preliminary plat and site plan simultaneously for the Cape View Coastal property at the southeast corner of Roseland and Adams. Could you do the next slide, please? So this parcel has a zoning of R2, medium residential, it also has a future land use of R2. The site is .28 acres. Previously, there was a non-conforming structure with 10 units on the site, if you guys remember that. This project proposes four units, which is within the permitted density of the 15 units per acre, so a decrease in density from 10 units to four. The site is currently vacant, and the surrounding area is a mix of single-family, two-family, and multifamily residential that's typical of the presidential streets. Alright, so, sorry for the block of text on a slide, but these are the criteria that city code lays out for approval, that the board should consider for approval of preliminary plat, rather. This is kind of a shortened version, but I'll just kind of briefly go through these and what city staff had to say about them. So, the project creates lots in developments in conformance with city code. City staff has all reviewed this, it meets the zoning classification, meets all applicable laws for preliminary plat. The project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Yes, it's R2, future land use, that one's pretty simple. Project provides proper ingress and egress. This is a corner lot, the access is on Roseland Avenue, and it does have proper access. Compatible and in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. I spoke about this briefly, but .28 acres, a density of a little under four, or I'm sorry, a little over four is permitted, and four is being proposed, so there's some townhouses right across the street to the north, and then a few more just down the street, so it's very typical development for that area. A lot of developments that we've had in recent years have been these sort of, these townhomes that are starting to look really nice, so it fits in with the area. Will not be creating burdensome congestion on the streets and highways. Roseland will not dip under its acceptable level of service, it won't be generating too much traffic in comparison to the previous 10 units. And the application promotes the orderly layout and use of land. Again, a decrease in density, replacing 10 units with four, it should not be crowding, and it's, you know, well laid out, it was looked at by the Community Appearance Board back in, I believe, September of last year, so they have given their stamp of approval. And, the application does not pose any significant harm to the adequate and economical provision of water, sewer, and other public services. This was reviewed by the Public Works staff, and water and wastewater infrastructure exist to the north and on every side, so it's got utility services. And then I do have the plat, I believe, in here, if you guys wanted to take a closer look at anything. And I don't know if there's a way as far as discussing this and then the site plan, discussing this first, talking about it?
Yes, so just to clarify, it's two applications that was required for this request that are being heard and considered concurrently, and so we can provide one staff report that talks about that project as a whole, and you can make one motion approving both, or whatever it might be. It's just two separate sets of findings required for approval.
Yes, thank you. At this point, before I go into the site plan, do you guys have any questions, comments on the preliminary plat?
Board Member Steve, question?
No questions this time.
Dr. Miller?
I'm good for now.
I do have one question, and I don't even know if it's relevant, but, you know, vacation rentals has always, has become a real big issue around here, is there any consideration given at this point for vacation rentals and whether or not that's something that we have to be concerned about?
We didn't really consider that at this point. It's residentially zoned, so it would have to abide by the seven-day minimum. It's not like they can do the rented-by-the-night, or anything like that. But no, we hadn't really considered that at this point.
Okay, alright, thank you.
What I can add as an update as well is, pretty soon, we're having a code enforcement officer dedicated to vacation rental enforcement.
Okay, good, thank you. Kyle, I think, no questions.
Alright, good deal. Alright, will you go to the next slide? Thank you. So this is the second application, part of the same item, this is for the site plan, so I will go through these again. These are a little bit different, Section 110-222 of our code, it's actually 110-222B, forgot the B. These are the requirements for the findings of approval. So yeah, I will go through those now. So number one, public services, it's a little repetitive, just to warn you guys. The development was reviewed by the Public Works Director, who confirmed it will not have an adverse impact on any public services. It was also reviewed by FIRE and by the PD, so they have all given their approval. Internal traffic safety, again, this is, FIRE has reviewed it, it will have driveways on each site, so two garage spaces for each unit, two driveway spaces for each unit, for a total of 12 parking spaces. Just something to note, the 10-unit multifamily only had 11 spaces, so they'll actually be doing a better job there. External traffic safety, again, it's not going to have a significant impact, it's a decrease in density, should theoretically lead to less traffic than before. And Roseland and Adams, neither are expected to operate below an acceptable level of service. Project does not generate any significant odor, emissions, smoke, noise, glare, yeah, so this is a residential project. I don't anticipate this generating any odor, I would hope, or emission, smoke, noise, glare, or vibration. Let's see. Environmental, the project does not generate, this is in the flood zone X, which is pretty typical of that area of the city, there's nothing really, so they provided a drainage port, there's nothing out of the ordinary when it comes to environmental impacts.
Well, they're not going to build it up higher like we have that issue on Coral Drive, are they?
Oh, no, well, they'll have to submit, when they do the building permit, they'll have to submit all the drainage and everything like that again, but we can keep an eye out.
Good, thank you.
The project does not significantly impact historic scenic or cultural resources, including views. This will be the same height as the previous structure, so no additional blocking of views there. The design, security and lighting is sufficient for the proposed density and hours of operation. Lighting is an aspect that was looked at by the CAB, we've reviewed the lighting. You know, obviously, they're close to the beach, but there isn't any lighting proposed that will be above and beyond what's typical of that sort of development. Let's see. Site design, so this is setbacks, shape buffers, so these all meet the R2 zoning classification requirements. 25 from the west, the front, 25 from the northern property line, because it's a corner lot, and then 15 in the rear and eight on the side, it meets it all. And, let's see, socio-economic, this will not have a bad impact on the socioeconomic status of the city, in fact, it's, looks better than the previous structure that was there, so I would say it's an improvement. And then this will not have an adverse impact on the city budget, local economy, employment, or property values. Again, continuation of the development pattern in the area, there's a demand for housing in the city, so I think it makes sense where it is. And this is just the site plan, the packet did include the other elements of the site plan, and I have some bigger copies here if anybody wants to take a closer look, but this is just the site plan. If you have any questions, you can take a look.
Vice Chairman, I did have something I stumbled upon when I was reading this earlier, and I'm sorry that I did not speak up earlier. Under the agreement, the coveted rules, HOA, line L states that no unit shall be leased for any period less than 30 days. All owners shall be responsible for any violations of this declaration by their tenants. So we do have something that they're building into their HOA.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Alright, is there, you guys got anything else?
Dr. Miller, anything?
I don't have anything, but before we take it.
Do you have something?
No, I do, I think it needs to be discussed. Given the situation going on in Fillmore, I think you need to show the board, not only the site plan, but I think you need to show the drainage plan. Can the applicant, when the applicant gets an opportunity to comment, explain why there's a drainage swale system that's surrounding all of the units and right up to the back door of the rear of the units further? If you look at the drainage plan, it looks like there's a sewer line running right through the drainage system, I think that needs to be explained as well. Also, the preliminary plat board will be going to the city council for consideration, and, you know, under the plating statute, the council and this board gets to review all information that's relevant to the approval of the plat. So, you know, there's a proposed preliminary plat that includes a drainage, and combination drainage and utility easement that goes all around the property, as you can see on the site plan, you can see the contour, not the contours, but the proposed elevation to the drainage swell. So, you know, I would suspect that there's going to be some questions regarding that, so I think we'd probably need to discuss it tonight. And can you pop up the drainage plan, please?
Yeah.
I need to, I can't read it.
Here it is.
See that, that's what I was bringing.
Alright.
Yep.
It looks better when you zoom in, so if there's.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
I mean, I believe the engineer is here tonight, if he'd like to speak to city attorney's question.
Can you, Brianna, can you just kind of use the cursor to show where that sewer, proposed sewer line is? You can, no, that's the outfall structure. If you look at the, look to the right, you can see the six-inch PVC sewer line in the back of the units. See it in the note right there? Right now, follow that arrow, and you can follow the line that goes up, it goes up, and you can see where it cuts across the drainage swell.
So you're talking about a sewer or a drain?
It's showing as a six-inch PVC sewer line in the rear of the units, and then it runs north, and then it cuts across the swale, see? That was one thing that I noticed. Worth discussing. Because there's literally no, there's going to be, you know, the sewer line running behind the units, and there's just a drainage swell, from what I can gather, right in the rear of the townhouse units. In the backyard, right?
Yeah, I think that's a good point, and the applicant is here to address any.
Should we have the, you say the city engineer's here? Should we have?
Not the city engineer, the applicant's engineer is here.
The applicant's here?
Yes.
Yes, if he's injured in speaking.
Sir, can you come up, introduce yourself?
Chairman and board members, the one, George, or an associate, and the engineer for the project, and, I guess the question of being this sewer being in the back in the retention pond, you've got to consider the retention pond is only 18 inches deep. The sewer has to be at least 30 inches deep to begin with, to even exit the house, because of all the connections that you've got to have, at, you know, minimum 1/8 inches per foot slope. So, the toilet takes 12 inches before even stuck, and then it slopes from there to go. So by the time we get to the back, the retention pond, where we were talking about, the sewer is going to be about three, four feet deep. And, so, we have to make the existing connection. So, you know, if it becomes, as I said, you know, the retention pond is not really that deep that you say it's a big retention pond. It's a, it's a two feet deep. It's 18 inches one places, 12 some places, and in the back where it crosses their retention pond, it's about two feet deep. And, at that point, this sewer is going to be about four feet deep to begin, minimum four to five, it's two feet deep leaving the house. So by the time it makes there, at the 1/8 of inch per foot, if you do the math, you know, and there's a cleanout of 4.8. And, so, again, I don't know what else we can do to make the existing sewer, to connect to the existing, and as being a townhouse, being a plat, the sewer has to be outside, cannot be run inside the unit. So, the option is, you know, putting it there or putting it in the front, however, wherever you put it, we've got to cross the retention pond, so. If I explain what your next question is, and.
This drainage plan?
However you want to get there, I have to cross the retention pond to get there. So, which way do you want to get, the back or in the front?
So Kyle, this drainage plan has to be approved by?
Yes, so this drainage plan, as well as a drainage report, was reviewed by the city engineer, and then before, obviously, any building permits or CFOs, it has to be looked at, you know, in some detail, so that is an aspect. This was obviously just the site plan, so it's not developed yet, but this was looked at thoroughly by our city engineer.
And this drainage plant, the way it stands right now, has been looked at and approved by the city engineer?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Just point of clarification, not yet approved, but reviewed in conformance. The official approval from engineering comes at the building permit stage.
Okay, thank you.
Why does the sewer line have to go through the drainage swell? Are there any other alternatives? I wish the city engineer was here to maybe comment about this, but why does the sewer line have to go through the drainage swell? If there's a future problem after these units are sold, and the property owners have issues with the sewer line, then they're going to have to disturb and then reconstruct the drainage system, correct?
Any erosion in question?
This is a private system now.
No, it's, well, as you.
Until it gets to the property line, it's going to be maintained by the property owners.
But, as you know, in Cape Canaveral, there are flooding concerns, right? And the city will be granted an emergency easement in order to ensure that this system continues to function properly and doesn't contribute to flooding in the area. So, you know, my question is, in the event there was an issue with this sewer line, then it would have to disturb the drainage system, right, as proposed, so were there any other alternatives?
If the time comes that it needs to be worked on, yeah, it's anything to start, we're going to put it back, you know, it's going to be anything else, wherever you disturb anything, you're going to put it back, you can't just leave it and, you know, go. So yeah, this has to be back, put back to its permanent condition, and that would be true for anywhere you go, any place.
I understand that, but I'm just asking, because I'm sure the questions will be asked, if there are any alternatives, rather than putting a sewer line going right through the proposed drainage system, that's all. And then, were there any other considerations given for other types of drainage systems, like exfiltration over parts of it, in order to preserve backyard space for the future owners of these townhouses?
Not really, because what happened, the city has the orders that we have to follow. Even though the existing that was there, there were no retention, there were no drains, and that was one of my arguments, which, you know, I didn't prevail, is that there was nothing there, and we're trying to provide something, but they didn't accept, your city engineer didn't accept, they wanted the full blown, you know, drainage. So, we have so much property, how much, what can I do? You know, there's so much you can, if you want, you know, it's whatever you put there, it's 200, 300% implement what you had before, and, because you had nothing. And that was my argument, but it didn't work. And, so, to meet all your requirements of 25-year storm, yes, you have to go through and provide all this drainage. And, which to me, is kind of an all-work for a small project, you know, that we are looking at, that it was previously developed and it was, you know, there, but that wasn't, you know, I didn't get the vote.
The outfall structure that's being proposed for the drainage system to the west, it's connected, it looks like, according to the drainage plan, it's connecting to a drainage inlet.
It's connecting, the outfall structure is connecting to the existing drainage inlet. And, you've got to keep in mind that your requirement, the city requirement, is that, or any other city requirement, is that the amount of water that is running off before you start development, it's got to be controlled. So post-development, the amount of water is going to be the same. At the pre-development, you had a lot more water going down, you would not, because they had nothing there. Now you have the drainage system. So, the amount of water that actually now the system is going to see is going to be a lot less than what you used to see. So, but yes, we are connecting to the existing car inlet of the street.
Will be any improvements done to the street inlet, or is it just a connection?
We're not touching the street to, you know, the only, really, the only place that we're going to be touching the street is connecting the driveway. We are not disturbing, we're not doing anything to the streets, but if anything gets disturbed during construction, you have to, well, that's one of the notes there, anything that happens, you have to put it back to its condition.
It should be noted that the sidewalk there is part.
It's not on the street, it's in.
Was required by the engineer to be.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with having anything with the street, and we're building the sidewalk, which is not there, so the drainage is going to go in before the sidewalk.
I understand that this is a private, you know, that this is generally a private, private project, and there's a generally a private drainage system. So under the city code, if there are going to be any public improvements related to the construction of this project, the city needs assurances that those public improvements will be completed before a certificate of completion is granted. So are there any, you know, the engineer, are there, other than the sidewalk, right, are there any other public improvements that are being proposed for this project?
Public improvement, there's nothing really, as far as we are proposed, there, water is there, the sewer is there, drainage is there, there was our pavement, you know, yes, the sidewalk is the only public improvement that we are providing. There's nothing else needed, if there was, then we would. You know, as part of the site plan, we would provide what is needed, but what can we do? You have everything.
It's just a question, but in your professional opinion, because you drew up these plans, there are no public improvements that ultimately will be conveyed and maintained by the city other than the sidewalk?
Other than the sidewalk, there's nothing else.
While you're up here, you're the engineer of record, right? Correct, the engineer of record for the project. Do you understand that under the city's plating requirements, that you're going to be obligated to file two sets of AS-BILL drawings and certify that all of the improvements that are reflected on the site plan are done in accordance with the site plan?
That's, that's part of the requirements that almost everyone with quality has today.
And you're prepared to do that at the end of this project?
If, again, the condition would be if my client hires you to do that, yes.
Well, I'm stating on the record that that's going to be a requirement.
Requirement, then.
Yeah, so that's going to have to be complied with, right?
Then there's no choice, because, you know, I cannot provide the service that I'm not asked to provide.
Well, the applicant needs to understand that that service is going to need to be provided, and an AS-BILL, two sets of AS-BILLS certifying, engineer of record certifying that all of the improvements that are shown on the approved plans have been built in accordance with the plans.
Again, that's a requirement almost everyone's value, so I'm sure it's going to be okay this one, too, but.
I'm just giving you a heads, I'm giving you and the applicant a heads up.
Yeah, I do not have the agreement to do that at this point, but.
You can go back and talk to your client after the meeting, then, so, okay. Those were the only questions I had for the time being.
Thank you, Anthony. You're welcome.
I did have the, I'm sharing a concern also with that swale and that sewer going through there. If there's any future servicing to that swale over next to the street, they could very well get down into that sanitary line. I'm not sure why you would not want to run it on the front of the property, where you wouldn't have to go down in the swale, come out through the, where the driveways and garages are, that's very typical around here, and then make your connection on the other side of the outfall for this storm structure.
If you're referring to going around the property and making it there, if there is enough fall, yes, but if there is not enough fall, I got.
Oh, I understand, oh, I understand, I've done this before.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to do, is live with what we got there. And if there was enough fall, that would be the preferred way to do it. Because otherwise, we don't want to go for a small project like this for the lift station, and, you know, it's not.
Oh, I get it, I get it. Yeah.
That's where the old one was connected, and we are using the old connection.
Oh, you're using the old connection, that's the reason.
The sewer is in the middle of the street.
That's the reason why you're cutting across that swale at that angle, because you're trying to hit the old connection, so, glad to know that. On the storm structure that's existing in the street, you're going to, they intend to go into the backside of that with the, with the outfall from the swale.
That's correct, that the inlet is existing, and we're going to core drill, and that's what's specified.
Going to modify the existing.
Yeah, those are things, to be honest with you, your engineer reviews on, you know, they're good, pretty good at that, you know, nitpicking, and we've gone through two, three reviews to get where we are. And, especially with the drainage, you know, it's, you know, as I said, you know, if there wasn't a 10-unit, we are replacing the same thing. Really, when you look at it, we shouldn't really have any drainage, because we're not having any adverse effect or impact to any of the system that wasn't there. But your court doesn't consider that, your court says you're going to provide, and so.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's a good point to make, I mean, the property was previously developed, right, with no stormwater system?
No, it wasn't stormwater.
Right, so, I mean, at least from your perspective, the applicant's perspective, the post-development runoff for the new project is going to be less than the pre-development runoff, right?
That's very true.
Which is just a general, that's a general requirement under the city code, but, not to interject, but can you clarify what you meant by, I thought I. But, not to interject, but can you clarify what you meant by, I thought, I heard you say existing stormwater, a sewer line? Is that why you're going across the drainage swell?
There is existing, yes.
Or are you talking about like there's an, an existing connection on the north side of the property?
What happened with the, the building that was there was 34 years old, there were no drawings on it. And so what we go based on is that ASB that the utilities have. And utilities has that stubout at that location that we are connecting. Now, there might be, you know, on that side, they didn't show any other stubout, not to say there are more, but it doesn't show. So we got to take what, what we have.
So it's the stubout that, that was, that's existing? Not, not, you're not, not the existing lines, or the previously existing, or the existing lines?
Stubout is basically, it's a service line that's provided for that property to be used.
Which is on, on the north side of the property, the stubout, right? But not the line, the line that's going through the swell that's shown on the drainage plan? Does that line exist today, or is that being proposed? Okay, that's what I want.
We are connecting, and if it was existing, we would take the existing, because why would you want to connect to a 34-year-old line like that? And we are connecting to the, right at the property line. Your ordinance requires that you have to provide the cleanup, and that's where the city maintenance starts. And right at the property line, where the cleanup is. And so the, the rest of them, yes, you get called, you might, you know, have an easement and so forth, but it's a private system, their plumber has to take care of it. And, yeah, if they don't, they start complaining, the city goes, yeah, I guess, getting involved.
Did you examine or discuss with the staff whether or not there was a sewer stubout somewhere else, perhaps on Rosalyn? As a, as a better alternative, so you would not have to go through the drainage swell? Like the way you're proposing?
Again, if there, there is, we would glad to connect to it, because that's not really anything on the, as far as that, does not affect the layout, does not affect the drainage, it's a, it's a separate item. And if there is another stubout there that we can use, we'd be glad to not go through the drainage. But if we have the choice, we have the, then we can.
Well, connect, connecting to the existing stubout is, is a convenience for the contractor to make a new connection, it's a new connection. That line probably runs down the side of that street. You actually shorten your distance on that line if you could go take a straighter avenue directly towards the street and not use that stubout. And there's also an assumption that that stubout is in usable condition.
That's one of the conditions that goes around the north we have, that if it is not, if it's not where it should be, where if it's not in the condition, they have to do, go to, you know, connect to the, the main line. But we start at, at some point. And so if it's not, you know, you're not going to use it. We can't use it. It's, there's a, there's a note that, you know, says if it's not, you know, if, we got, the first thing they got to do is feel verify that it's there, first of all, it's in good condition and it's usable. And if it's not, there's a different alternate. It's one of the smart comments that we went back and forth with the city engineer was that. And so our, our point was there is, if you go to utility drawing, there is a note regarding that the first thing to do is to verify. And all the existing before you go to the next step.
Anthony, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I'm, I wish the city engineer was here to maybe elaborate. I probably wouldn't be asking you these men, this many questions. I appreciate your patience.
No problem, but he doesn't ask.
Because I'm not an engineer, I'm not an engineer, but I'm trying to ferret out a few things here for the record. So, assuming, assuming, I mean, you kept the sewer line in, in the rear, is there any, and I understand gra, I mean, you're using gravity, right? To, to, to transmit the sewer, right, to the stubout?
To best of our knowledge, there isn't. If there is, you know.
And is there any?
It doesn't show on your drawing, it doesn't show on your ASB.
Was there any, is there any, like, from an engineering perspective, assuming that sewer line stays in the rear, to run it along the outer perimeter of the property rather than through the drainage swell, the way it's being proposed? Or is that not feasible?
As far as, again, if there is an alternative, there is an option, yes, but, you know, from what we could tell, there wasn't really option. And I'll be honest with you, you know, that's what we rely on your, this city engineer review, we rely on the public works, we rely on, you know, we go through four reviews to, you know, hash out this thing. And when it gets to you, you know, hopefully this thing should be worked out. It's items that, you know, you know, we spent six months on this going back and forth, and these questions, you know, and the question came out, and, you know, and that's why we have all those notes, that's why we have, we went through all this, what we did. And it's not the first time. And, but, you know, we'd be glad to, you know, address things if we know, if you know, if there'd be medical comment, if there's a concern, you know, we can address it. But if it doesn't, if, you know, how can we do, you know, we can be a reminder.
Okay, I did a cursory review. I didn't, with respect to utility lines, you, you're aware that the city code requires all onsite utility lines to be underground?
To be what?
Underground. Put underground, utility lines like electric?
They're all underground.
They're all underground onsite?
It's, it's something we don't, you know, I said, the design portion, we don't get involved with that, but I believe it is, because that's not what we designed, that's not part of the engineering, that's not part of the permitting we do. And, but I assume it would be. The water, you have no choice, sewer, you have no choice. The utility, I'm sure all the new, you know.
You have a utility, I mean, you have to, you have to submit construction drawings, specifications and plans as part of a plat, okay? And it includes, and it looks like you've included all the, you know, various pages here, you have a utility plan, right? So I, I'm just asking, I mean, that all of the onsite utilities are going to be underground? I didn't see a notation on your plan for that, so.
That would be on the plat if there is, as I said, on the site part, which I'm involved, I'm not involved with the plat part. At the site part, we never get involved with the electric. The electric, it's a electrical, we never get involved with. It's not the part that you even, your engineer reviews it. It's a part that, you know, that's, goes to FPL and they, you know, dictate what you need to do. And as far as being underground, I assume they're saying it's, my client said, this is going to be underground, so. But I have no knowledge, I have no control on that.
Well, I, well, you do have control, in my view, but on your utility plan, I didn't see any notation, making it clear that onsite utilities have to be underground. And my understanding is all developers, when they're developing, developing a project, they request power, right, from Florida Power? So you have some obligation to ensure that Florida Power and Light, when they come in and do the electric, for example, that they comply with the city code. Okay, because at the end of the day, like I, like I said it earlier, you're going to have to certify that this project was completed in accordance with the approved plan. So I want to just emphasize to you that onsite utilities have to be underground, and I, and my, my opinion would be, should be noted on your utility plan.
Again, I'm, I'm, but, but I don't argue, I don't want to disagree, but we do not get involved with the power, given that there were 10 units there before, and we're building four, so the power should be well, because we do less.
It's not a question of availability, though.
As far as the underground, it's not something, again, it's code requires, if it's required, you know, it's going to be part of review, it would be part of the comments. If it's not required, if, you know, if it was, if it was a comment, then we'd be glad, we'd be happy to make a condition of all underground, going to be, all utilities going to be underground. But, you know, if it's a code item, we can address, if we get comment on, we address.
And Anthony, just for reference, it is noted on the plat, number nine of the surveyor notes.
Right. I'm looking at the utility.
Okay.
Plan and the proposed construction drawings. But yes, it is noted on the, on the plat. We would, you know, I would recommend that, you know, there'd be a similar note on the utility plan, so it's not for, so it's not forgotten.
If it wasn't a comment, Anthony, it wasn't, you know, it was, you know, usually it goes on the plat, or underground.
Are there no existing utility poles sticking out of the ground on this site?
I don't think so. If there is, that's not, this might be a, like a light pole, but it's not going to be required to have a, like a drop pole for the service being underground.
Make sure, I'm not familiar with the site, that there's no existing.
Actually, there is. There is on the edge of the property line, yeah. You can pull it up on Google Earth and see it. And I actually just drove by the property moments before I walked in here. So there is a utility line running through there.
This property?
There is one running down the easement. There appears to be an existing easement over on the one side of the property, the bottom of the property where, where we're looking at it. There also is a power, a light pole that's at one corner of that property that still shows up on Google Earth. I didn't pay specific attention to that when I was looking at the site just a few minutes ago, but that utility line still does run down through there. So there's power poles.
They're active?
I would assume. I would assume they're active.
Any other questions? Anything else I can answer or confuse you? Again, all we can do is follow your code, we follow, you know, your review, we follow your engineers. That's why, you know, we have reviews.
Does it make sense that we postpone this discussion till we can have the city engineer?
Yeah, they run right there, down through there.
The plat, I mean, the plat's got to be, is a, it's a, you're serving in an advisory capacity to the, to the city council. Preliminary plat, and we have the, you know, the proposed hearing drawings, you know, which I think are necessary to review the whole plat in the project. So if the board is, if the board's not comfortable, certainly, I mean, you're welcome to table the item. However, at the very least, recommend that when you, when you make your recommendation, that you make the recommendation subject to the city council's review and consideration of the proposed site plan.
You might make a note of that.
Well, I would make your recommendation subject to. They are going to be looking at it. To the extent that the, you know, the city council wants you to review it again, then, you know, they'll be able to do that. So, recommend that you do that. You're not asking, you're asking, you're not asking for the board's final approval on these construction plans, are you?
Asking for a recommendation.
No, just the preliminary.
I'm talking about on the, on the site plan, construction plans?
Final, final approval, what, how do you mean? Just a recommendation to the, to the CED director?
So the request here before you tonight is a concurrent application around the same project. One is the preliminary plat application, and in order for that to get approved, you all would make a recommendation to council, who then has the final sign-off and whatnot. And then for the site plan review, it's site plan review with those findings required for approval, that you're making a recommendation to the community economic development director, who, and I signed off on the staff report, so, who would, if concurring, just like if council concurring approves that site plan, and then they move forward with the next steps, which is submitting for building permit application when the full construction set is reviewed and officially approved and stamped prior to permit issuance. Then they do the construction, they have their intermittent inspections they have to pass, and then once the city confirms all of those inspections are passed, they're issuing a certificate of occupancy. At that point, it's the onus of the property owner to submit to the city those two ASBs to comply with the certificate of completion, and then the project's done.
My point is, before you make a final recommendation on the site plan, I think this preliminary plat, along with the site plan, should be presented to the city council, and that you reserve your final recommendation on the, on the site plan based on city council's consideration of the site plan in conjunction with the plat. So my point was just to, your recommendation to council is subject to, you know, their consideration of this total package. And to the extent that the council has any, any comments regarding the site plan, I would suggest that before you make your final recommendation, you consider those comments.
So you're, so just as I'm taking action minutes here, assuming, it sounds like you're probably going to use this language, so, just so I'm clear, you're saying that the site plan approval, which is typically the community development director's final sign-off, should, that we're actually putting the responsibility for review in city council first as an extra step? It can, to be heard at the same time?
The city council, under the plating statute, has the ability to review all information in making the plating decision.
Yes.
So the, the site plan and the plat go together in conjunction?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so they're going, they're going to be reviewing both. So my point is, to this, to the extent that the council has some comments regarding the site plan, they can make those comments and they can be, if necessary, if necessary, presented back to the planning and zoning board before they make their final recommendation.
And then it would go back to council, because they're?
Well, final plat goes back, yeah, final plat will go back to council, but, you know, the site plan ultimately has to be approved, it has to be approved by the planning and zoning board.
Recommended for approval.
Talk about that, but they need to, they need to consider and approve the construction drawings under chapter 98. Because these two go, they're going hand in glove with one another.
Apparently, yeah.
The plat and the site plan. So council's got to make a decision on the plat, and they need to see the site plan. So they may have comments, I don't know, they may not have any, but I'm suggest, I'm recommending to the board that, you know, they reserve, you know, final consideration of the site plan until they hear back from council and their decision on the preliminary plat. The council, were hypothetically not approved the preliminary plat, it's coming back. Okay, so that's all. I'm just saying, make it subject to the city council's review and consideration.
So we require, the city code, excuse me, requires that these seven findings be found in order for the city council to provide that final approval of preliminary plat, and planning commissions making a recommendation around these, which are spelled out by code. And so city council just makes these findings. The findings required for the site plan, they're making and recommending, and then the code says community development director is final sign-off. I'm, I'm trying to understand the, because, are you saying it should go to four, you're saying it should go to council and then back to planning commission?
98, 46, says that the planning and zoning board and the city council shall review the preliminary plat and other materials submitted for conformity with the code.
Yes.
Negotiate any changes deemed advisable. Planning and zoning board and the city council shall vote to either accept, reject, or modify the planning official's recommendation.
Okay, I think I'm understanding now, so you're saying?
So I'm, I'm just saying, if the board is fine with moving this application along, we need to hear from the council as well.
On which application?
I think on all of it.
Okay, so, well, I think I understand what you're saying, just as my notes and making, as you're making a motion.
They're just, I mean, the. They just, I mean, they go kind of hand in glove, so, I mean, I don't know how you, you know?
So what I'm understanding is that?
You dissect it.
Is that the city code says, the site plan, excuse me, the preliminary plat must be reviewed and a decision made based on all provided information, which includes the site plan. You're saying that they could, the city council or planning and zoning board can add conditions or deny or anything on the basis of the preliminary findings, if something is found in the site plan that is not compatible with those findings required for approval. That's what I'm understanding, which makes sense. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Got it. So, are there any other comments, questions?
I have something to say.
Just one second, sir. I, we'll get to you, I promise.
Just waiting to see what you want to present to us.
Okay. Are you John? Sir, are you John?
I am.
Come on up and introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
I'm John Desmore, I'm the agent for it, I'm the builder. So what's your question that you, that, where are we at now on this? Since you hardly understand, I definitely don't understand. Where are we at? What are we doing? Are we, is any, is there a code that says you can't have your sewer line going through a drainage zone?
That's a question, I mean, for the city engineer, I mean, but all the holes.
If a street that has a swell.
The whole, the whole.
Has a sewer line underneath it.
My, my only point is that this next stop is the city council, right?
Right.
City council's going to consider this entire, entire package.
Right.
In your application. So what I'm saying to the board is, whatever, if they want to move this along to the city council, that it's going to be subject to the city council's consideration of your application.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. So, and I, and I just raised a question about the sewer line, because it's sticking out like a sore thumb.
Within the code, they have the sewer go to the side underneath the swell, underneath the retention?
Excuse me?
Oh, we, within code, they have our sewer line go underneath the retention.
Oh, that's a city engineer question.
And the city engineer provided that that is?
The city engineer slipped it, yes.
Well, the city engineer's not here, and I don't think the board really wants, I mean, you can make whatever comment you want, but that, I don't know what the city engineer would say.
He reviewed this, and it is, it is not a breaking of any code to do that.
Okay, so we're through that. Okay, and the other thing is, it says on my building, I'm sorry, it says on my bill permit, overhead or underground. It shows a schematic with weatherhead and then underground. It says these are or. Obviously, if you city has, which I know they have a code to go underground, we'll go underground, because if we go overhead, we're not getting a CO, right? So we spent, you know, 1.8 million dollars to not have a CO. So, yeah, we're gonna go ahead and run it underground, if that's any holdup, if it is.
I didn't suggest it was a holdup, Mr. Desmore.
We're clear on that.
I just made it clear that that is a code requirement. I'm glad that you're aware that that is a code requirement. We've recently had a situation where apparently it was not done. So I'm, I'm just bringing it up.
Right.
Just making mention of it.
Right, okay. Any questions for me on anything? Guys, our appearance was in September. We've been trying to get here since September of last year. Ninety days in a row, we didn't have a quorum. The last time, someone got sick and didn't show up, and then, I'll just vent for a little bit, maybe the wrong time to do it, but then we get a comment from, from the surveyor. Believe it or not, it says northeast, south, and west. They didn't have the N on there for north, so they kicked it back. I hope anybody in this room would be able to guess where north is if you got southeast and west on there, but it's one of the things that got to come back. Surveyors have seen it five times. They see one thing and kick it back, and Kyle can attest to this. Dave Dickey's gone now, but they see, and send it back, and just saying, hey, there's three things wrong here, fix it. It's, and they had, one time they had for over three months. It's ridiculous to get to this point for a quadplex. Anyhow, that's all I gotta say. So, thank you.
I'd like to make one comment. As a board member and a citizen here in the city of Cape Canaveral, I look forward to the development of that property, because currently it's an isoar as it sits. So, I think, I think we have the potential to see some progress there, but I think this is a positive thing once all these items are worked through.
I think, um, one of the things that we're trying to consider here is, trying to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed now, so that there's not problems later on, which could end up taking a lot more time and spending a lot more money. So we're just trying to make sure that we get things taken care of upfront, and it's, it's, we're not trying to take anything away from you, we just want to, we want to make sure you're protected.
I totally understand. I was at the appearance board, one of the ladies says, well, you don't have a balcony on the front. Would it be nice to sit up and drink a cup of coffee you were here for?
Yeah.
Just like, okay, we don't have a balcony.
Yeah, yeah.
Just trying to get through it.
No, I, so, yeah, we're not trying to take anything away from you, we're just trying to protect you, make sure things are done, yeah. Okay. Comments, concerns, anything else from out here? Board members?
No comment, but I would like to make a motion to-
Time for a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to reserve the final decision till after the review by the city council.
Do we have a second for that?
Which application is that for?
For both. It's, uh, consideration and review of the, of the plat and site plan.
Recommend approval of the preliminary plat. And approval of the, of the site plan subject to the city council's consideration of the preliminary plat and proposed site plan.
Okay, I would like to, let's adjust that motion.
And if the, if the council has any comments regarding the site plan that need to be considered by the board, then that, that would come, that it would come back to the board for consideration?
All right, I don't know if I can repeat that.
Brianna, do you have that?
Yes, I'd be happy to repeat it, just to confirm.
And Steve, that's the motion you want to make?
Yes, that's the motion I want to make, that, with, with the attorney's comments.
Yeah, just the one question, I guess of you, is that we have, all of the, that the site plan shall not be approved by the director until the preliminary plat is approved by city council, who is to consider all of the application materials in conjunction with their approval. That, I forgot that. Now, I just want, need to clarify, you're saying that the site plan itself, if they have issues, they, they need to send that back to planning commission, but the site plan won't be on the city council agenda because it, it doesn't, it, the site plan physically will be included in the packet, but the application is not, city council doesn't have the authority, light out in code, to make a decision on it. So would they be sending the preliminary plat back to planning and zoning?
I don't know.
Okay.
If they don't approve it?
Okay, got it.
I don't know if they will or not. I'm just saying, they go hand in glove. If they have comments that, you know, may result in, uh, matter coming back to the planning and zoning board, it comes back.
The plat, got it, yes.
And, you know, and comments regarding the site plan, I don't know. Like, it needs to be going to the city council and, and have an opportunity to comment. I mean- They need to have an opportunity to comment. They may just approve the, you know, the preliminary plat and have no comments regarding the site plan, and then it's, you know, it's on.
Okay.
Council has final say on, on plats.
So we have a motion. You have a second?
I have a second.
Brianna, can you call roll, please?
Yes, could you, who was the second?
Dr. Miller.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have, uh, board member Denny?
Paul.
Board member, gentle chord, absent. Board member Miller?
Yes, you.
Okay, Vice Chairperson Price?
Or the motion.
And Chairperson Russell's absent, and Board Member Stroud.
Or the motion.
Motion passes four to zero to two, absent.
Can we clarify, what was the motion? What did we hold on? Was that final?
Yes, so the, so this is two applications being considered concurrently, and so, the motion was to approve as recommended in the staff report. And the next step, excuse me, recommend approval. That's the, the power of this board is to recommend approval. And then the city council, they have the duty to give final approval of the preliminary plat, so they're going to review the same exact attachments that planning and zoning reviewed, um, and they have to make those findings required for approval of the preliminary plat. And, well, there's, there's one more part to it. And so, the site plan review itself, the code says it has to be the director's approval, but what this motion does is, it says the director cannot approve the site plan until the preliminary plat is fully approved.
Okay, so it's a contingent on the plat approved by the council and the consideration of the site plan?
Yes.
Okay. So we move along to item number three. Uh, consideration of ordinance, uh, whatever number it is, 2024 to amend the city's building, buildings and building regulations to adopt regulations to allow the construction and installation of rooftop amenities on multifamily, mixed-use, commercial buildings and so on. Kyle?
Yes, sir. Um, so this is one you guys have seen at least twice, I think. We've at least talked about, kind of, working out the language that we wanted to use for this ordinance, so the ordinance is finally here. I'm sorry for the wall of text again, but just going through, these are the conditions included, um, in so many words. So, if we want to just very briefly go over those, if you guys have any comments, questions, anything, we can, we can sort of talk about it. So just to very briefly recap, for Brianna, who you weren't here for any of this, but, we have a number of developers who have been, have shown interest in creating space on their, their roofs, so, above 65 feet, which is currently the maximum approved, approved height, to have observation decks, bars, things like that, that don't have any additional enclosed space, other than the elevators and stairwells that are required by ADA. So our code basically said that because of these elevators and stairwells, that would be officially above 65 feet, they can't do it. Otherwise, fire was okay with it, building code, we had our building official at the time, and our current building official have, have both given their, their thumbs up. So we had to address it in our land development regulations. So, this is an attempt to do that. Um, so, just to go over these very briefly, the first one, we just wanted to make sure that every building, fire, land development regulation is covered, even if it's not explicitly stated, we want to make sure that that's covered. So that's what the first bullet does. Um, for multifamily and residential, the amenities must serve all residents and not be exclusive to only certain residents. Um, and then for commercial, they shall be associated with an establishment doing business within the building. Must be architecturally compatible and integrated, so, um, you know, with the time of CAB for a new development, that would be something that they would consider, um, at, at site plan. So amenities may exceed the maximum height by 12 feet, but elevator and stair equipment may exceed by a maximum of 15 feet. And, um, we'll talk a little bit more about those amenities in a second. The amenity area, which includes the elevator and stair equipment, shall not exceed 50% of the total square footage of the roof. It shall not be enclosed. Um, and they can include open-air shade structures that are at least 50% open, so umbrellas, landscaping, seating, things to keep, you know, people out of the heat. But obviously, they have to be stable and resistant to movement in storms, or if they're not, then taken inside. Um, lighting fixtures must be fully shielded and directed downward, away from the beach, has to meet all applicable lighting codes. Um, can't be able to see it from, you know, outside of the parcel. Um, signage is prohibited with the exception of small signage within the rooftop amenity area. There can be a protective and structural, actually, there shall be a protective and structural barrier designed to protect safety and privacy. Music shall not be audible below the rooftop, and the amenities shall not, this is what I was trying to say, rooftops shall not be visible from the ground, except for these aforementioned barriers. Um, so I think we, we discussed this, and I believe that this has addressed many of the comments, but if you guys have any questions or comments?
I do have a question.
Yes?
In one of our conversations, was there a discussion about limiting this to, uh, structures that are in the economic overlay area? Or was it, did we not consider that?
Not, not that I recall, although effectively, the vast majority of buildings that would have this.
I realize that, but I also understand, you know, there's the Holiday Inn Resort.
Yeah, that's a great point. It's a great point.
Economic overlay district.
Yeah.
And so that's my que-
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. That's my question. What, did we confine it to the economic overlay district, or did we leave that wide open?
I don't believe that was discussed, no.
Is that something that we should discuss?
Well, yeah, to your, to your point, that Holiday Inn, um, is probably the best example I can think of. Is there a reason to not include them?
Why would we restrict it to the?
Well, my thought, Susan, is not, I mean, I'm all for rooftop restaurants and bars, I'm 100% for that. That, the fact that we have height restrictions, um, the, to me, in the economic overlay district, we've already made exceptions for that, but along the beach area, maybe we don't want to make those exceptions in the beach area because of visibility and that type of thing.
Yeah, I think that's a valid comment. You're right, so, and obviously, in A1A, you can get up to 65 feet. Everywhere else, it's a maximum of 45 feet.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe Holiday Inn isn't even 45. I may be wrong on that. It probably, it probably is.
Now, we were talking about this new hotel that's coming up.
The, uh, the one that's currently under construction?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not in the overlay district, right?
It is.
It is? Oh, okay, all right.
Yes, yes. That, both hotels that are currently under construction are in the overlay.
Gotcha.
So really, that, that area, the Holiday Inn, is, is one of the few commercial buildings that isn't.
Yeah, the Holiday Inn, in my recollection, might be the only commercial one that's not in the overlay district.
It's very possible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but I, I think that's something that needs to be considered.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, it's a matter of, I mean, the whole idea behind that height restriction to begin with was so that we didn't obstruct the view of the coastline.
Right.
Well, the economic overlay district is far enough away from the coastline, it's really not that big a deal, and we've made exceptions in terms of height regulations because of that. But we haven't really considered, in my opinion anyway, how rooftop, allowing rooftop, uh, activity would affect, um, along the coastline, or along the, the beach line there.
Right, right. They may find it more difficult to, to meet the lighting requirements as is. Um, I know the port is very, very, very strict about, about it, naturally. Um, but yeah, that's certainly something that we could, we can have added, if you guys, if you're all interested.
What's the rest of the board think? Steve?
I think it's a good idea to limit it to the EOC district. Otherwise, we let genie out of the box. We could have situations and with other structures in Cape Canaveral, and get things that we didn't intend to happen to begin, you know, in the beginning here.
Dr. Miller?
I, I agree with that. What, I don't believe it was anything we discussed. I do remember us talking about, are we going to talk about this with just new construction, or are we going to let existing structures?
Okay, okay.
I'm with you guys. I guess I, when I was thinking overlay district, I'm sorry, I'm thinking like, with- I, I guess I, when I was thinking overlay district, I'm sorry, I'm thinking like Wizard of Oz area and stuff like that, so, but I do think we did agree that we wanted to make it so existing structures, as well as new constructions
But now, we're talking about making sure that it's restricted to the economic overlay district.
Okay.
Anthony, do we run into problems with that?
The challenge is the existing structures, to put anything up on a roof and meet all of the ADA requirements are just astronomical. I mean, we're talking, you're talking about getting sanitary up there, you're talking about drainage, you're talking about electrical systems in these buildings that were not designed to push another riser, another floor up, elevators, I mean, it just, it's, it's, it's a bridge too far in most cases with existing. The only place that's really feasible is gonna be in the EOC when we're, when we're doing the new construction.
So, so Kyle, the city council's gonna have to look at this.
Yes, that's correct.
So, perhaps this is one more thing they should consider.
Absolutely, sure.
And I can, I just checked the CRA boundary map, specifically, I had it available, against the zoning map, and the only commercial properties not within their boundary, like you said, the Holiday Inn property, and then, there's properties on the northeast corner of Central and in North Atlantic.
And that might be just the CRA, the
Yeah, I know it's different.
Economic overlay is very slightly different, I think.
Yes, very slightly.
I'd have to check, but, yeah, so that might be the only one, and they're already built, so it's not like they could probably add it, but, but I, I think the intent makes a lot of sense.
All right, if, yeah, if you could add that?
Yeah.
Does anybody have any?
So, we're saying we're limiting it.
Well, we're, we're talking about including that language for
Right.
For the city council to
So, recommending that
Yeah.
Be added.
Okay.
You guys have any, anything else?
Anybody else, anything? Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, you need to make the recommendation.
Okay.
I think you need to open and, open and close, yeah.
So, is there, before we go to vote, or does anybody out there have anything you wanna add?
They're just observers.
Okay, all right. Fellow board members, is there more to discuss about this particular item? Steve?
I don't think so, at least from my perspective, as long as we can, I would consider approving it as, as it sits with the addition of the, of, to only be used in the EOC district. That would be on that recommendation, otherwise.
So, I'm, I'm looking at your recommendation here, okay? And it says, recommend approval to the city council to amend the city's building and, buildings and building regulations to adopt regulations to allow construction and installation of rooftop amenities on multifamily, mixed-use, commercial buildings, which satisfy the requirements set forth in the ordinance providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporated into code, survivability, and effective date. The only thing that we wanna add to that is consider restricting it to the economic overlay.
Okay, and in the, in the body of the, the chapter 82 itself, we can add that
Mm-hmm, yeah.
As a condition.
I think modified subparagraph B, that provides rooftop amenities shall be permitted in commercial, mixed-use, multifamily building located within the
Yeah.
So, just include that in your motion, and then we'll include that. We'll make that change, and that's what gets presented to council.
Perfect. Fellow members, is there, is it time to make a motion? Any other questions, comments?
I guess I'm just questioning why we're limiting it just to that one area.
So, I'm, I'm gonna tell you what my thought is, okay? My thought was that, you know, a long time ago, building height restrictions were imposed, particularly along the beach, to preserve the beauty of the beach. So, since we're, since we've already modified somewhat the height restrictions, the allowable height restrictions in the economic overlay district, then by doing this wouldn't be much more, but if we allow it to happen on the beach, then what happens? Do we, do we sacrifice the natural beauty of the beach? Do we sacrifice visibility? Do we sacrifice that type of thing?
Question, and I'm not arguing with you.
No, I, no.
Just, the building's already there, how is that going to stop the beauty of the beach, or how is that going
Well, by, by allowing rooftop amenities, it would, it would necessarily add to the height of the structure. That's it, that's what I'm thinking, yeah. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna add one thing to that. The economic, our area here can tolerate the additional noise, additional lighting that it would be created by a rooftop amenity, where our neighborhoods on the beach or behind these taller buildings would not be so tolerable to that, because those are quiet, should be quieter areas, quieter neighborhoods.
But it said in there that
Correct, that's, well, my, my concern is, is the density of people you might have up there at a given point in time, the, as John said, the additional height and stuff of things, amenities being put onto that building and stuff, and my concern is, is it would encroach to the surrounding residences that, that don't have that right now.
And also, I do just wanna mention, it, it is in subparagraph B, rooftop amenities shall be permitted on any multifamily building, so, and theoretically, if some multifamily building were to get developed outside of the, which is a lot more likely than a commercial, they also would not be able to do it, and so that's something to consider that I wanted to, to mention, so if, you know, a condo was redeveloped or something, they obviously, right on the beach, could not do it.
I think it's, I think it's something worth kicking around and, and talking about, you know, it's, that was just an idea that I had, I don't, I don't wanna
But I'm not saying I'm totally
Yeah, it's worth talking about. If it's not, if it's not reasonable to make that recommendation to the city council, then we don't, but
Well, you know, the other side of that is, is it can always be expanded. We start in one spot, and we get it going, and in, in the event that somebody wants to
Yeah, it, it's easier to give something than it is to take something away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, I mean, if the, if city council's desires to, to, to take that, maybe that's something that's thrown up on our plate, but I think for now, we would, we would limit it to this one area.
Staff just put up the EOV boundary, and it's rather sensitive, and covers the most intense, dense part of the city. Those parts that are outside the EOV, the east and the west, are residential, or parks and rec, or some public institutional use.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you, you limit it to the EOV, it's covering a large area, and where the primary interest for rooftop amenities actually exists at
Yeah, absolutely.
Where you've heard property developers wanting to implement rooftop amenities, and my understanding, you know, comes from
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
You are leaving, it's a need from some of the property owners, but just limit it to the EOV.
Anything else?
Well, let's go ahead and make a motion. Does anybody wanna make a motion? I will. I'd like to move that we recommend to the city council exactly what's written here with the addition of limiting to, limiting it, rooftop, rooftop amenities to the economic overlay division, district, I'm sorry, economic overlay district. John Price, second?
Mr. Price, I'd like to second that motion. I'm sorry. It's a
Brianna, would you call a roll, please?
Board member, Denny.
For the motion.
Board member, Gentle Corr absent. Board member, Miller.
For the motion.
Vice Chairperson Price.
For the motion.
Chairperson Russell, absent. Board member, Shroud.
For the motion.
Motion passes four to zero to two.
So, we move on to reports and open discussion. Does anybody have anything that they, we have one report that I'm sad to hear. Can you give us a little bit more background? You're leaving, do you have someplace to go?
Yes, yes, I am leaving, and I, I wish that Lamar and Nancy could have been here tonight, but I am going, going private.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, gonna go into the dark side, gonna, gonna try it out, and we'll, we'll see, we'll, it's kinda, had to, had to try.
Uh-huh.
So
Are you staying local?
I'll be around, yes, and I'll be at Sea Oat Plantings, and, you know, I live here, so, I'm a, I'm a resident, so I'll still be at Sea Oat Plantings and Friday Fests and all that, so, and I know, I see, I see Steve, I don't know if you saw me, I saw you at Publix, I've seen you playing pickleball, I see you quite a bit.
Oh, you haven't seen me playing pickleball, but I see
No, you see me, yeah, 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 but I'll definitely see you around.
Where?
International.
Yeah.
We use our friends' pickleball court.
Pickleball
Saw him walking his, walking his tongue, yeah, it was a little embarrassing, but it's okay.
I, I've never laughed at you, so
Well, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your service.
Yes.
Yeah, you've done a lot for the city, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
We missed.
Any other open discussion? Make a move for, make a motion for
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.